Good evening, folks. All right, welcome to a public hearing. City of Little Zonin Board of Appeals, public hearing for April 14th. Just a few reminders, if you have a cellphone or electronic device, you can turn it off or set it on vibrate. It'd be appreciated so it doesn't disrupt the meeting. And then also, you can join tonight physically in the chamber. So you could also call in or Zoom by planning with DPD ahead of time. We'll just go into continued business. We have ZBA-2025-4. The petition is a variance application as Venar Nar, property located at 73 Inland Street. The petition, the Loans Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing to heal interested persons relative to an application by the applicant to enclose their existing front porch at 73 Inland Street. The subject property is located in the traditional single-family TSF zoning district. The project requires variance approval for section 5.1 for relief from the maximum floor area ratio, the maximum front yard setback, and any relief required in Lo's ordinance. Yeah, are you here for 73 Inland Street? Yeah, come on up to the podium. You wanted to state your name and address for the record and just give us any update about your project, sir?
My name is Venar Nar. I have all the paperwork that you guys asked for. I pulled the electrical permit like you asked for. I drew it out and do you guys want it?
All right, so did you submit that to the city or?
The electrical permit?
Like everything that we asked for last time you were here?
Yes, the electrical, I have the paper here.
Okay. All right. Is there anything else you want to say before we move the hearing to the public?
No.
Okay. All right. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition is petition? An opposition, an opposition, all right. Seeing then the portion of public hearings closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of petition? In favor, in favor, seeing then the public hearings closed. We're going to open question comments to the board. Chair organizes Mr. Proco. Mr. Proco, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Nar, have you, the last time you were here, your intention was to meet with the building commissioner? Have you met with the building commissioner?
Well, I met with somebody and they helped me out with the drawing. I came to grab the paperwork, get the electrical permit. I don't know who it was though.
Okay. Someone help you with the drawing? Was it submitted to the DPD department?
I don't know if I, I have it here, but I don't know if I would. I didn't know who to submit it to. I thought I was supposed to give it to right here.
Okay. I believe that, you know, the commissioner had some serious concerns about some of the work that was done. And I know you said the permit was done, pulled, but we have no evidence that it was inspected. So I know you've met with someone. Has anyone from the city come over to your property and inspect the work that was done?
No, they're still working on the house. They're still, the electrical people are still working and they're waiting on the city people to come check it. Like it's in the process of being, they're changing all the outlets and the panel, but it's not done yet.
Okay, so you have some paperwork you would like to submit? Can we view it, please?
You see, it looks his name. Oh, good. Should be the last one. Is that it?
They have a permit. They just don't have the physical copy with them tonight. So I asked them to send it to me via email.
But does the permit that they have resolved the issue that the building commissioner was concerned about?
It seems like it, when I pulled up the minutes from that meeting, his main concerns were that they did electrical work for their kitchen remodel without pulling a permit, which is what they filed for.
Okay. Okay. All right, well, I'm glad it met the expectation. So now we can focus on the porch. When I look at yesterday, I see that some of the work is just about done. And from that perspective, if you meet the requirements, I think that this could be, I think that this is probably a simple request, but I would let my fellow board members make that decision as well. Listen to hear from the board members. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Proco. Chair organizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Peter, to the best of your knowledge, have the concerns expressed by the building commissioner been satisfied?
That's how I understand it, yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm going to take your word for this, Peter. So I'm hanging my reputation around your neck. I know where you live. All right. No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. Chair organizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
I also have concerns about the Peter, David, Commissioner Fuller's request. He asked for a permit for the solar installation, solar array. He asked for a permit for the duckless mini splits. Do we have either of those?
The copy of the permit on the phone. Can we just ask and take a look at what we've got so we can see it?
As I understand it, I don't think Commissioner Fuller is satisfied with what has been done so far. And I thought that that was the exchange that we saw earlier, that we don't have the concerns met of the previous hearing with satisfying the permits that the building department was looking for.
You're right, sorry. I glanced too quickly at the notes. They don't have a permit for the mini splits, only for the kitchen remodel.
How about the solar array?
That's not on the scope of the permit either.
I also have the permit for the solar.
Oh, you do?
And I talked to the electrician. He said he did put it for the mini split too. I don't know what is on there though.
Well, these are, okay.
I can't confirm.
It's been a couple of weeks hasn't, since the last time you were in front of us? And we are still discussing what you have or have not received? So it's unclear? In addition, I was asking for drawings reflecting the elevations and a site plan that clearly indicates how the stairs are going to operate for the enclosed space. I don't see that as something that was provided for the board to review.
We have the drawing, Joe, the drawing.
I'm sorry. Venar Nar?
Yes.
Submitting material at the hearing for us to see isn't acceptable. And we've made that request for the Department of Planning and Development to instruct the applicants that material for us to have at the hearing in front of us should be submitted no later than the previous week. And I believe it's Thursday evening of the previous week to give us enough time so that we're not working the weekend if we don't have to. And we'll be prepared for the hearing on Monday night. So anything that you want us to review for your application should be in the hands of DPD to distribute so that the board can receive it no later than Thursday afternoon or the week prior to the hearing. So providing material tonight is not something that I'm willing to entertain. I'd like to move to continue this and to iron out these wrinkles for the missing permits and the missing documentation before I could be willing to render a vote on how to proceed. Thank you.
They have a permit for the solar, but regarding the drawings, because I didn't work the meeting that night, did you guys want something stamped?
No, we just need to, I personally just need to understand how the enclosed room is going to operate. Is there a stair that rises up and approaches the entry? You only have 4.2 feet? Okay, this doesn't apply. It looks like a deck is nine and a half feet across the front. Four foot 10, 4.10. I'm sorry. This, it needs to be a drawing to scale that shows the intent of the construction, in my opinion, so that it's buildable and believable for the members of the board to understand. This is a sketch with some notes and it's not to scale. And it is incomplete. It doesn't show enclosure of the porch as far as what the walls are and as far as the, maybe you can meet with DPD to understand more clearly what the elevation should reflect to be complete, to understand. But any contractor building this can't build from the sketch, in my opinion. Or if they can.
Do I have to hire somebody to draw it out for us? Or is that what you're saying? Or like, because we don't, I don't, we kind of don't, I don't understand what you're, like, how do you want the drawing and stuff?
So it's simple. Whatever is being built should be on paper first in a clear articulated manner that shows to scale one eighth inch, one eighth of an inch to a foot, one quarter of an inch to a foot, something to scale that reflects exactly what you're going to build. And the stairs should be indicated as far as how far out from the porch they're going to go. If there's a landing at the top of the stairs before the door is, what the railing is going to be like, how that's going to impact the inland street right of way? Because in my opinion, your stairs might need to turn 90 degrees in order to not go into the right of way of inland street. I don't know. But I don't understand this. It doesn't indicate what's, it doesn't, to me, indicate something to scale that's buildable. But more importantly, that the building department is satisfied with your prior construction and that permits are being respected in the city and that you are going through the steps to amend or to correct past missteps, i.e. doing construction without permits. That isn't tolerable and coming before, in any event. I'd like to see this continued. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair organizes the vice chairman, Ms. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Dennis on that. Actually, can I take a look at, let me see what, thanks. And actually, can I see whatever else you brought that you planned on submitting today, sir? I just want to understand, make sure what we're getting, what we're dealing with here. Because we have the permits, we have the permits that we were dealing with. We have the drawings, which now that I'm looking at it, Dennis is correct. It's not to scale. So if we're going to agree to continue this one more time, we want to make sure clearly what is, what we have and what is being asked. Thank you. Do you understand what he's saying? Because I can't. Okay. So the building permit application, it's dated November, November, signed November 4th, 2024. When, is that when you submitted this to the building, to the building commissioner?
Yes, last year.
Okay. Okay, I'm trying to get the timeline correct here because the last time we were here, my understanding is that Commissioner Fuller mentioned that you did apply for a building permit, but it was incomplete. And that it was at point, at that time, we suggested that you speak with him and try to clarify, clear up what is being, what is missing and what is not. My understanding is that there's been no communication with Commissioner Fuller since our last meeting. Have you spoken, have you gone to the building department? Have you spoken to Commissioner Fuller at all or anybody in his, in his office since the last meeting in February, on February 24th?
When, when was the last time we was here?
February 24th was when we had the last meeting.
24th, I did what you guys did and then you guys, when I came here, you guys denied me because you said.
No, no, sir. Okay, hold on. We didn't deny you. What happened, you were here before us on February 24th, I believe, late February, asking for the variance approval here. Commissioner Fuller was present and he informed us that you had several outstanding issues with regards to building permits that were outstanding that needed to be clarified because Commissioner Fuller informed us that, you know, they believed that there was some construction going on at your place without any permits being pulled. He informed us that you, though you did apply prior to that, prior to that hearing on February 24th, though you did apply for a building permit, it was incomplete and he told, he told you it was incomplete and that nothing was done to rectify that. And now you're presenting us with a building permit from November of 2024. And again, let me clarify, February 2025 is when the hearing was. You presented this with a building permit application from November of 2024, which was pre, was prior to you applying for this variance and thus having the hearing on, in February. So I'm gathering that that application that was presented to Commissioner Fuller is the application that he said was incomplete. So my question was, have you spoken to Commissioner Fuller or anybody else in his office from February, when we had the last hearing on February 24th of 2025 to today?
Yes.
Okay, when did you speak with him?
I don't know who I spoke with. Somebody helped me out with the drawing. I grabbed the, you guys asked for the electrical permit for the kitchen and the mini split. And I came to grab the permit and then I grabbed, then to grab the electrical permit to give to the electrician. And then we got the permit for the kitchen and then the mini split. And then somebody helped me out with the drawing. You asked for a drawing and then he kind of gave me a rough draft of what they needed for the drawing. I don't know who I spoke with, but it's just, I went to get the permit and then like, oh, I need help with a drawing. And then they, they gave me the direction to a person that.
Okay, I understand. Again, my question is when? When did you speak with them?
After the meeting.
After the meeting?
At the last meeting that we had.
Did you go, did you go the next day? Did you go the next week?
Probably like a week later.
A week later? You remember who you spoke to, the name of the person? It was in the building department though, right?
It was in the building.
And it wasn't Commissioner Fuller? Because you met Commissioner Fuller here at the meeting last time, remember?
The one that was sitting right here, right?
Yeah, yes.
I'm legally blind, so I.
I understand, yeah, I know. I can, so, okay.
Was he, was he supposed to, does he do the drawing? Because I've met somebody that helped me out with the drawing.
No, I don't believe he does the drawings, no, so. I don't know who helped you with the drawings, but they're not, those are incomplete as well. We're running blind here, unfortunately. Commissioner Fuller wasn't present. And last, last we heard, he said that you, there's been no communication with you since the last meeting. And now you're here presenting us with the paperwork, which I believe is the incomplete application that Commissioner Fuller was referring to previously. So.
So, so right now, you're telling me that I need to finish another permit?
You got to talk to the building, you got to talk to the building department again, sir. I think we can, I could probably consider agreeing to one more continuance on this, but I mean, we're flying blind here. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say that as.
I just need a whole list of what I need.
Figure of speech, I'm sorry, sir. If I, I didn't mean it as an insult or anything to, my apologies. But we don't have the information we need to proceed on this. And I guess one more continuance, maybe one more continuance, but probably going to need Commissioner Fuller in next meeting to confirm if and where, if everything gets done. So that would, that would be my suggestion, so.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Thank you, sir. Chair organizes Mr. Havi. Mr. Havi, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I'll try to be brief. I agree that we should continue this. I don't feel comfortable voting one way or another on paperwork that hasn't been submitted to DPD because we know through experience that it can change, right? So we're not going to approve something that's not in DPD's hands yet. Peter, can somebody from DPD reach out to them and explain what needs to happen? Because I think there's a breakdown in communication here.
Yeah, I can do it tomorrow.
Okay. So I agree with Members McCarthy and Callahan that we should continue this to the next meeting with DPD reaching out to the applicant and explaining exactly what we need to have you submit to them and to do. Because I think there is a level of miscommunication here. You think you're doing the right thing. We're not hitting the right, right areas here. So we're missing permits. We're not pulling the right thing. I'm pretty sure that Commissioner Fuller wanted inspection of work that was already done. So get all those things done. I saw that the sign is up today. It's up on the fence. So at least that's one of the issues that's been rectified. But I agree, this should be continued to at least the next meeting so we can get, get this all submitted correctly.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Havi. Sir, so we're going to continue the matter to, to the next available public hearing. Mr. Katrimpas, when is the next available hearing on, on the agenda? Like, is it a meeting out, two meetings out?
No, it's the next meeting on April 28th.
Okay. Mr. Nar, is there enough time for you to work with your team and the planning and development, building department to get all the documents and everything we talked about?
Yes.
Okay. And, and just like my colleague said, please make sure you have all the documentation the Thursday before the week of the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, so with DPD, so just, just work with DPD. I'm sorry, what's the date again?
April 28th.
April 28th, okay. All right, can I have a motion to continue the matter, please?
If I could.
Yeah, Mr. McCarthy, go ahead, sir.
Sorry. Is your, Mr. Nar, is your builder here today?
No.
Okay. You might want to ask your, are you, so you're not the builder? Then you have a builder, a carpenter or a contractor doing the work?
Yes.
Reason I ask is because you're indicating on your sketch that the porch runs the entire width of the structure. Yet in the site plan, you're indicating that it only runs where the current porch sits. So the enclosure is different on the site plan than what your sketch shows. In addition to that, you indicate 4.2 feet of dimension between the porch and the front property line. On your sketch, you indicate six risers and five treads. Five treads would put you out beyond your property line. So that's why I'm looking for clarity here with a document that shows how you're going to build this because your sketch doesn't, isn't consistent with what your site plan is showing for dimensions.
So if I, if I get the carpenter to draw it, that would be a lot better because we, this is our first time.
I think you need to do that. I think you need to do that, just to be clear as to what you're asking for because your document that you have, your sketch, is very unclear.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. I just want that, if you can bring your contractor or carpenter or project manager here to the next meeting, I think that'd be helpful as well.
He's actually on vacation. I don't, I don't know if he'll be back.
All right, no worries. Can we just have a motion, Mr. McCarthy?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA-2025-4 for variance at 73 Inland Street to be continued to April 28th, 2025.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy, continue to April 28th?
Second.
Second, Mr. Proco. Can I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck?
Approved continues.
Vice Chair Callahan?
Approved continues to April 28th, 2025.
Member McCarthy?
Approved continuance to April 28th, 2025.
Member Brier?
Approval.
Member Proco?
Approved continuance to April 28th, 2025.
Member Havi?
Approved.
All right, you've been continued. We see you April 28th, okay, sir?
Okay, thank you.
Thank, thank you. All right, just, just for the public record, to be no other notices, this is the notice of the matter for continuance for the record and for the public.
Peter, can we just keep Commissioner Fuller updated on this? His presence might be required at the next, if, if he's available. His presence may be required next, next meeting so we can make sure everything's in order, so.
Oh, anyone from the building department, actually?
Or anybody, anybody in the building department. It doesn't have to be Commissioner Fuller. Somebody that can kind of help us out to clarify, confirm that whatever's, things are in order or whatever, so, thank you.
All right, thank, thank you, thank you for that, Ms. Callahan. All right, moving on, continued business. We have ZBA-2025-7. The petition is a variance application as Duval Sign Company, property located at 1201 Bridge Street. The petition, the Loans Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing to heal interested persons relative to an application by Duval Sign Company to erect signage at 1201 Bridge Street. The subject property is located in the regional retail RR zoning district. The proposal requires variance approval for section 6.3 for relief from the maximum size of the wall requirements and any other relief required in Lo's ordinance. Oh, good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for your consideration tonight. My name is Ken Duval, owner of Duval Sign, presenting the client, the owner.
You want to tell us about your project, sir, and what you're doing?
Sure. This is a resubmital for an approved, a prior, prior approved permit from, that expired in, I think it was October of '24. The project picked backed up this April and so we've resubmitted for another approval for some channel letters at a dentistry and braces office on 1201 Bridge Street.
Okay, anything else you want to share for the board, sir?
No, the only thing to note that it was, that it was previously approved for the extended, extension of square footage, which I think is the reason for the variance here.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. We're going to open the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition is petition? An opposition, an opposition, seeing then that portion of public hearings closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of petition? In favor, in favor. All right, seeing then the public hearings closed. We're going to open question comments to the board. The chair organizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, no questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair organizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to ask if there's an explanation as to what happened? What, why the delay in doing the signage?
My understanding is that the company that the doctor was using, they went out of business during that period and so things lapsed. And then I was doing some contracting for that larger business that closed and that's how he knew me through them. And so we picked it up in April. It just, the business closed.
Got it.
They didn't continue it.
Okay. Okay.
They weren't able to, rather.
But you're following basically the same design that we had previously approved, so there'll be no changes?
Yep.
Okay. I know further questions, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Uh, the Chair recognizes the Vice Chairman, Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Uh, thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. Um, I have no issues with this. Uh, um, the only thing, um, we did previously condition it, that the hours of illumination shall be one hour before sunrise to one hour after sunset, or one hour after close of business, whichever comes later, um, you know, no, no objection to that, right? For, like, save the, lay the previous conditions as well, so.
I will set the timer to those.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, no problem. So I will be, uh, in approval of this, uh, with the condition as previously set forth, so, thank you.
Thank you, um, Mr. Callahan. Uh, Chair recognizes Mr. Havi. Mr. Havi, the floor is yours, sir?
No, I'll sit.
Thank you. Um, Chair recognizes Mr. Prokop. Mr. Prokop, floor is yours, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I also don't have any issues or questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prokop. Um, best of luck, hopefully everything works out this time around, so I have no questions either.
Yes.
Just good luck. All right, can we just have a motion, and then with the condition that we talked about, sir?
Absolutely.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2025-7 for variance at 101 Bridge Street for relief from section 6.3 for maximum wall size, as well as an illuminated sign, um, with the condition for hours of business, um, for, for illumination.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy.
Second.
Second, Mr. Prokop, um, can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Uh, approve the condition.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve the condition.
Member McCarthy.
Approve with condition.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Prokop.
Approve with conditions.
Member Havi.
Approve.
All right, you've been approved, wish you the best of luck, sir.
Thank you all.
Have a good evening.
You too.
All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda, under continued business, we have ZBA dash 2025-10, the petition is a variance. Um, the applicant is Bradley Hinkley, property located at 109 Mammoth Road. Um, the petition, the Loews Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing to heal interested persons relative to an application, um, by the applicant to convert the existing single-family home at 199 Mammoth Road to a two-family home. The subject property is located in the traditional two-family TTF zoning district. Um, the project requires variance approval per section 5.1 for relief from the minimum lot area per dwelling unit and minimal usable open space per dwelling unit requirements, and for any other relief required in the Loews zoning ordinance. Anyone here for Mammoth Road?
Continued.
All right. Yeah. All right, no one's here. We did get notification that they were questioning continuance to May 26th. All right.
Is it that, is that long, really?
I, I don't know what the form says, but when I spoke to Hushy, it was for the next meeting.
Which would be April 28th.
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't have the document in front of me, but he, I think the, he asked, the form that he fills for May 26th, I mean...
Well, May 26th is, uh, that's Memorial Day.
Oh.
Yeah.
And it's also my birthday, so.
It's not, it's not...
That's how I know it's Memorial Day.
Mr. Katrumpis, can we just, so, so what, just, is the next available doc the 29th, then?
Uh, yeah, there's, um, there's a slot on April 28th, um, and there's, you know, it's open on the 12th and the 29th, too.
All right. So...
Wait, May 26th is Memorial Day, so our meeting would be the 29th.
Right.
Of that week.
All right. So we're gonna say 29th, then?
Okay.
All right. Any other questions before we move forward with the motion to continue? All right, seeing none, can we have a motion to continue, please?
Quick question, though, they, uh, they haven't submitted anything.
No.
They were supposed to resubmit plans, and that hasn't been done?
No, it hasn't been done.
All right.
Well, again, Peter, I think I mentioned it previously, if you can just remind him, because he, he claimed that at the last meeting, he had them.
Yeah, yeah, no, we, we didn't receive anything unless it came in the last hour, but I actually can't get onto my email tonight.
Okay, no worries, all right.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2025-10 for variance at 199 Mammoth Road to be continued to May 29th.
All right, motion by, well, thank you, motion by Mr. McCarthy, continue the matter. Second by the Vice Chairman, um, can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Uh, approve continuance.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve continues to May 29th, 2025.
Member McCarthy.
Approve continuance to May 29th, 2025.
Member Brier. Member Prokop.
Approve continuance to May 29th, 2025.
Uh, Member Havi.
Approve.
All right, the matter's been continued. All right, going on to new business, we have ZBA dash 2025 dash 12. The petition is a variance, the applicant is Jeremy and Darlene McSorley, property located at 133 Clark Road. On the petition, the Loews Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing to heal interested persons relative to an application by the applicant to subdivide the existing lot and construct a new single-family home at 133 Clark Road. The subject property is located in the suburban, single-family SSF zoning district. The proposal requires variance approval per section 5.2.9 to create a large SSF lot with less than 20,000 square foot, and for any other relief required in Loews zoning ordinance. Good evening, Counselor.
Good evening, Attorney Catherine Flood, Flood Law Office, 549 Rogers Street, here on behalf of Jeremy and Darlene McSorley pertaining to property at 133 Clark Road. Here also with me is Matt Hammer from Lamplex. We are here tonight to request a variance pursuant to 5.2.9 to reduce the lot size from 20,064 square feet to 16,067 square feet. The property is located in an SFF zone. A little history about this property. Um, the property was originally subdivided into five lots, um, by a prior owner. The, the lots were then reduced by special permit to create two lots, one lot consisting of 51,393 square feet, having 40 feet of frontage, and the other lot consisting of 20,064 square feet, having 60 feet of frontage. The applicant also had, um, has obtained a special permit pursuant to 6.7.2 for a driveway greater than 200 feet. The applicant already has approval of the subdivision of this lot to construct a single-family home on the other lot. The applicant is now looking to adjust the lot line to remove the odd shape of the lots to create two rectangular lots, which are consistent with other lots in the neighborhood, besides the size. As part of the relocation of the lot lines, we are here to request a variance for a 3,933 square foot reduction in the square footage of the lot. The variance for the lot will clean up the lot and make it in conformity with the other lots on the street. The odd shape of the lot creates a hardship for the applicant, restricting the use of the back corner of the lot. We submitted, um, the originally approved plan showing the lot line. We also submitted a current plan showing how we wanna cut off the back, um, corner of the lot and create a rectangle lot on 133 Clark Road. I will let Matt take over to show you, um, where the lot lines currently exist and what we're asking for.
For the record, Matt Hammer with Lamplex Engineering and Surveying, 10 George Street, Lowell, Mass. So I'm gonna give you a little history of the lots that, that Attorney Flood, um, described in the, um, in her presentation. So right now, we have 133 Clark Road here. At the time, there was, this is the plan that was approved, uh, by the planning board. The original house for 133 Clark Road is here, this is Clark Road. There was a proposed addition, a proposed common drive to get to a, a dwelling here. The lot at that time was created to be 20,064 square feet, and it was in this odd shape here. The other lot was this lot here, consisting of 51,393 square feet. Well, when you look at this lot connected to this house, it becomes evident that this portion of the lot is not realistically usable for this dwelling. You could say that somewhere in here or somewhere in here would be considered something that you could actually use. The special permit was granted for the driveway, for the lot, and the common use here. Additionally, there was a, there was an easement provided to bring utilities here, which has currently been installed, all the utilities, as well as the driveway up to here. The proposal is to remove this lot line here and to create this rectangular shape here to create a lot that's 16,067 square feet. All of this is currently, uh, constructed on the site today, as well as the driveways constructed up to this point here, which is consistent with the prior plan. Existing also is a pool house here, which is shown here, and a pool. We received the comments, um, uh, one other thing I wanted to show, there was a comment about landscaping, and I just wanna let you know that the, the McSorleys have hired a, a landscape architecture firm out of Boston, and they've been working, uh, for quite some time, coming up with a very robust landscape plan, which you can see in this plan, uh, which is a lot more than we typically see, but it's just very well thought out. I also wanna say that Jeremy McSorley is also the owner of a company called Greener Group. I don't know if you've seen their vehicles around the city, they specialize in landscaping, so you, you can be assured that this property is gonna be landscaped, landscaped appropriately. So we wanna adjust this lot line to be here, for this lot, um, thereby leaving the rest of, the remaining of this land to be contiguous with one lot here. We've incorporated drainage, grading, we've done soil testing, um, we've been working with the building department with the pool house, and, um, you know, right now, this part of the project is approximately halfway done. And we're, and that's the presentation regarding the lot line adjustment.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Hammer. If, if folks have anything else, I'll open up to the public. Are you, you all set, Counselor? You're up, no, okay. All right, we're gonna open the hearing to the public. Um, anyone wishing to speak in opposition's petition? Good evening, sir.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mark Cabral, I live at 155 Clark Road, one house down, uh, from, uh, the McSorleys. I just have some, some, some concerns, and, uh, the back of my land, you know, my house, a botch where he's going to supposedly put this, this house. And as of right now, you know, uh, as I walk out the back of my, my yard, all I can see right now is mounds of dirt and construction equipment and front-end loaders and all that, and, uh, one of the main concerns I have is water runoff. Okay? Drainage, that, that seems to be a big concern of mine, uh, and my wife Deborah's, uh, you know, with him wanting to possibly put, you know, that dwelling on, right on, you know, within 40, 43 feet of my, my, my land. We have a pool and so forth, so there, and we're really concerned about that. Uh, and then he's asking for like 4,000 square feet of pavers and parking. Where's all that gonna drain off to as well? So we have, we have, we have some issues with this, that, you know, hopefully can be, can be corrected. And then I'm also concerned about the size, you know, there's nothing put in writing right now, but if he goes from 20,000 to 16,000 and then decides that he's not gonna do anything with that land and decides to sell it off, I mean, that, that could give a hardship to Deborah and I, against our property. So, you know, we have, we have a lot of issues that we, we're trying to protect, you know, living a couple doors down from him. We're, you know, we're concerned about, you know, several things that, you know, hopefully can be worked out, or we can get some answers to, uh, but I just, uh, you know, I just wanna make sure that we kinda nip this in the bud and, and not one day all of a sudden have a big, huge water issue and so many, you know, so many other issues that might come, come with this. And as far, as far as the, like, if there is gonna be a dwelling there, a noise factor, I mean, right now, it's just, uh, a black chain link fence that divides the properties, and, you know, I don't wanna see this. I don't wanna look out off my property and see all this. Uh, I think, you know, I think that's a concern, and, uh, let me think of, you know, that's, that's probably it, but one of the main things is, you know, is, and it's mentioned in, in your notes and everything, is, is water runoff and surge and drainage and so forth and so on, and so, I think that's gonna be a huge concern. And as well as, like I said, it might cause, if by chance they go from 20,000 to 16,000 and then decide not to do anything and maybe sell that piece of property off, that might cause a hardship for, you know, for, you know, Deborah and I. And just, just some concerns that we have. All right, thank you very much for listening.
Okay, thank, thank you, sir, for your comments. Um, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition's petition? Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Elizabeth Mead, and I live at 143 Clark Road. Um, we've been living through construction of this pool project for over a year now, um, multiple construction vehicles back and forth, um, multiple per day, um, blocking our driveway, going in and out, stopping traffic on Clark Road. I have a safety concern about that, where if this is just a pool house that's being constructed and a pool, what happens when it's a, a full blown house? Um, I have young kids, um, I've had trouble backing out of the driveway because their construction vehicles or their big 18-wheelers are blocking the road. Um, no police detail to my knowledge has ever been there. I do work from home, so I am, my office window is right at the street. I see this all day long, all last summer. Um, I have an issue with the noise, um, it's been ongoing again for, you know, quite a bit of time. Um, there's construction vehicles there on the weekends, um, and it's, you know, we're, we're trying to enjoy our own backyard, which also has a pool, and unable to, you know, really do that very well over last summer, and the pool's not complete yet, so we have another summer coming up of this. Um, I have a concern about, um, you know, the timeline, um, how long this is going to take. We've already endured, as I said, um, this year of time going, going with the construction that's happened so far, and to now put another house, apparently, we were told that, uh, we had a, like, a neighborhood meeting a couple of weeks ago, that they utilize their own workers from their company that are mainly doing work on the weekends, because they're doing their regular job during the week. And so, to me, that extends the project quite a bit. Um, I'm worried about the drainage in yard, in our yard as well. Um, I'm worried about, uh, emergency vehicles getting down the very long driveway. Um, you know, we, again, had this meeting with our, with our, um, with all the butters a couple of weeks ago. I think you guys took the wind out of their sails, which was probably the plan, but there were about, I don't know, 20, 20, 25 people at that meeting that were very much upset about what has gone on thus far with, um, the, what has already taken place. Um, we were told we had, you know, the property, the single-family home was already approved to be put on... to be put on that lot. Well, that may be true, but with the lot lines the way they are, that property cannot be built the way that they would like to build it, and I think that wasn't clearly made apparent to everybody at that meeting. So those are my concerns. It's just a big disruption, and I also, as Mark said, don't want to look out my backyard for years to come looking at mounds of dirt and then, you know, a new humongous house right in my backyard. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition's petition? Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Maria Vega, and I live in 27 Tiffany Drive, and my concern is how is allowed that big wall right on my driveway, next to my driveway? My bedroom is right next to it, and it just blocks the sun and the big noise and all the excavators over there and the weekends, and my daughter works second shift. She's a nurse. She comes home. She can't sleep because there is big noise on the backyard. There's just, isn't it, it's so much noise. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? All right, seeing then that portion of public hearing is closed. Anyone who should speak in favor's petition? In favor? In favor? All right, seeing then the public hearing is closed. And just to remind folks, please do not, like, talk during this portion. It's closed, the public hearing. If any of the members would like, if you have, whatever, if any members want to ask you specific questions, that's different, but please do not yell out information during the meeting. I mean, we understand people are passionate. All right, we're going to go to the board for comments and questions. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to ask Peter, these comments that we got, I think were generated from Dylan, at least Dylan Riker is listed as the author. Did he have access to the site plan that we have here tonight in front of us from Land Plex that is dated February 24th? Because it clearly states that the pervious material, the paver material, is listed as pervious pavement. So it's not impervious, and one of his comments is that it exceeds 4,000 square feet. Well, if we're using impervious versus pervious, that's the difference.
Yeah, you know, I can't say for sure. The one we have uploaded on the website is also dated February 24th, 2025, so if they're the same plan, like, assuming the date, you know, wasn't, it wasn't a mistake to not change it, that would have been the plan that he's working on.
We have significant comments about this, and they are related to drainage, so maybe we can speak to that first if that's possible, especially since, it's a big development. It's a very big development, and I'm hoping you could also address the differences between your plan and the landscape plan, because there's a lot less pervious or pervious pavement on the landscape plan.
That's true. I just wanted to let you know that the landscape plan is something that's continuously developing. Typically, we don't find that a landscape plan is necessary for a single-family house, but I just wanted to let you know that they've retained a landscape architect.
I like his plan better, just saying.
I'm sure you do. Wow, that was quite a plan, and they've been working on this for quite some time.
Well, I think the neighbor at 155 Clark Road might appreciate it better because it preserves a lot of the existing trees.
Yeah, so I want to talk about the landscaping. I just wanted to reiterate that there's going to be a lot of landscaping on this property, a lot more than what we typically would see on a single-family house, but nonetheless, it's a robust landscaping plan in terms of the details of what the tree species are and the bushes. I don't know if that's necessarily as relevant as, it's all work in progress, and I'm just not sure it's something that is going to change anything materially in the site, but it's something that they're putting a lot of effort into with a landscape architect, and they don't match exactly.
Significantly.
What's that?
They don't match significantly on the southern border.
That's correct.
Okay, it's not a small thing.
Yeah, well, I'm just, originally, I didn't even know that the landscape plan was even going to be submitted.
Okay.
We just wanted to show you that a landscape plan is in the works.
Which one should we believe tonight?
For tonight's discussion, it's this plan.
Okay, so we can put away the landscape plan?
Yeah. The landscape plan, you could put as a condition that would go to DPD if need be at some point, as we typically do. In relation to the comments, I just want to let everyone know that I've had two meetings with the stormwater team. They asked for a drainage element to be removed here. They asked for this drainage element to be pushed back. They asked for an additional drainage element to be put on the down gradient side of the multi-sport court, which is here. And we have infiltration drainage here, infiltration drainage here, and we're going to have porous pavers from everything that's extending beyond the existing paved driveway.
Will the porous pavers satisfy all the drainage requirements of the pavement?
Yes.
Yes.
More than satisfy.
More than satisfy.
Yes.
In fact, you're probably taking some of the slope of the driveway into that porous pavement as well?
Correct.
Yep.
Yes. In fact, we're even thinking about maybe removing this entire driveway and doing the whole thing porous pavers.
Beautiful.
But it's not necessarily a requirement, that's all, but it's something that he's, he wants to do because he wants to have that nice clean porous paver look of the driveway.
So the concerns of the neighbor at 155 Clark Road were...
Which is over here.
Stormwater?
Yep.
And so you've addressed that on this plan with porous pavement, and there's no runoff at all?
It's going to affect his property, and I spoke to...
It's going to affect any property?
Yeah, and I spoke to Mr. Cabral outside during the meeting, and I just wanted to let you know that I've had two separate meetings with the stormwater team related to the comments that we provided.
Okay, and is this plan tonight different than the plan that we have, Peter? It looks like, for instance, the, what are we calling this, the spreader has been relocated?
Yes, we moved this back.
From the plan that was on the website?
This looks different. I mentioned earlier that I'm locked out of like the shared drive for the city, so I don't know if it's been put in that folder, but this one's not on the website. I can say that.
So you're providing something that's new to us tonight for the first time, but you've at least started to address the comments?
That's what I wanted to show you, is that we took into account those comments and incorporated with an updated plan. It's a stamp plan. It's been submitted to DPD, but it has no material change of the plan other than incorporating those drainage comments.
Wonderful. Okay, I think I'm happy with this civil piece satisfying the city's concerns. If I could just ask some of the concerns about the, why the lot is 16,000 and change versus 20,000? You wouldn't be in front of us at all if you had made Lot Number One 20,000 square feet, is that correct? Attorney flood?
I'm sorry, can you...
You wouldn't be in front of us at all if you had made Lot One 20,000 square feet?
Correct, which we could do, but it's just the back corner doesn't really work that way.
Okay, and I buy that, that you're really making a very narrow neck to go to a piece of land that's only to satisfy zoning and really does nothing for the usability of the land, other than maybe, I don't know, a little vegetable garden over there, maybe. So that's the only concern that we have at this board tonight is the variance regarding that Lot One.
Yes.
And that's 16,000 versus 20,000.
Yes.
And your choice to make that a usable lot and then have the remainder of the lot be developed for Lot Two.
Correct.
Okay. I buy that. I think that that makes a lot of merit, although, I mean, you could make it 17 something if you want that extra 18 feet down to the corner versus where you drew the line. I'm not sure if that matters one way or the other. If you could just explain your rationale to stop it 18 feet shy of the corner?
It was to provide a suitable area for the drainage back in that side.
Okay.
To support the pool house area.
Okay. All right, I don't think I have any further questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes the vice chairman, Ms. Kelly. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, through Mr. Chairman. I mean, my question first and foremost, I mean, why do you need so much parking? I mean, there's, it's just, on the second lot, you got the, you got three garages, you got fully areas that can fit three more cars at least, maybe four or five, but then you got the down, the area on the south end for more parking. What's the purpose of having all this parking there with, I understand it's going to be porous area, but we got concerns from neighbors here about drainage, and, I mean, why are we even going with that? Why can't there just be green space? Why does that area need to be parking? Additional parking for, when you already have six, potentially six spots there?
This is a property that involves two families, the McSorley's and their parents.
Okay.
That's the intention of the property, and honestly, it's for having extra parking so it wouldn't spill out onto the street for having things like parties, right? So I'm not going to hide behind that.
No, I understand, I understand that on Clark Road, there's no parking, obviously, on Clark Road, much parking, if there's, but it just seems it's, we're kind of too competing interest here of like, you know, yes, you want to take parks, you know, take cars off the road, but also the neighbors, there are issues, and even the city had issues with regards to the stormwater and the drainage, so...
I have another good reason.
Yeah.
Okay, so the drive itself is subject to access for our fire department or emergency vehicle, so we want to make sure that drive is fully clear.
Okay.
So we have a no comment from the fire department related to the drive. It's consistent with the prior plan, okay? And we want to make sure that that drive is clear, not cluttered up with cars in case it is needed for an emergency. And then we have the additional spillover area in the back, which is more of a hardscape, more of a larger patio that can accommodate vehicles, so it has multiple of uses that can be used for.
Okay. All right, no, thank you, Mr. Hammer. Good answer. That makes sense, so, I mean, yes, you are here for the square footage portion of it, and I understand why you're cutting it off that, but I, and I understand that your part of it was to accommodate for the drainage, infiltrated drainage. Is there any possibility that could be moved in order to maybe square it down back to that extra 18 feet, just to, just to kind of get it to, no, a little closer to the 20,000 that you're seeking? I mean, what, how can, how can we justify a hardship on this, a hardship on this if we're trying to get to 20,000? When you, it looks like you got a good portion of that that could accommodate, I mean, I guess I'm trying to see, I guess I'm trying to see where we can go from this, Counsel, because the hardship portion of it, I mean, it seems you have plenty of land that you could do with the hardship portion, with the, with the exception that you're already building a pool back there and everything else, so it's like, I'm just trying to figure out what's going on here.
So, Mr. Kelly, and we most certainly can do that. We could square off the lot to the end.
To the end?
Yeah.
Okay, how much, so, I mean, Dennis ran around figures, but how much, how much extra square footage are you getting if you square it off to the end there?
So it'd be...
Probably 1,300. So over 17,000.
Okay. Well, what then?
Looking forward to like 2,500.
Till they give an extra?
Long only 1,100.
Okay. So that'll get you to 39, 17...
16, 17. 17, 2.
17, 2, give or take?
Don't quote me on this.
No, no, just, we're working round figures here, so...
But essentially, it would be just squaring that off.
Yep.
Yep. Kind of makes sense to me if we do that, I mean, just...
We most certainly do that.
Okay. Well, for the purposes of the, for the variance, I mean, that seems, that seems to work for me, understanding that you still have to go in front of the planning board as far as whether the lots can even be split at all, and then the other...
The lots are already legally split. They're already...
Or what other, really, the planning board has to...
We are going in front of the planning board because we've made a modification to the driveway, so we're modifying the special permit for the driveway over 200 feet. The publication was in error when it was written.
Okay.
We already have a special permit to subdivide the lots and to build the house.
Okay.
That's what we're working on.
Okay, that's why I was confused. I thought maybe the special permit ran out from the previous, from the previous granting, and that's why you had to come back in front of the planning board.
No, and we've sat down with Dave Fuller, and we've reviewed everything, and it's still valid. We just, they told us when we modify anything that you have to go back to the board to have that approved.
Yeah.
So the driveway and the house location are moving slightly.
Yeah.
So it's a modification to the previously approved special permit, so that's what we're going into the planning board for.
Okay. All right, I mean, well, for the purposes of the variance for us, I mean, we want to, it's for the lot size only, and pushing it back, I think, helps accommodate a little bit, so I'll listen to my other fellow board members, what their, what their thoughts are on this, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kelly. The chair recognizes Mr. Havi. Mr. Havi, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, we got to stay within our purview here. We're really looking at Lot One, but to address a couple of the concerns, and Mr. Hammer did earlier, that of the neighbors and emergency vehicles, these plans get submitted to our fire department, so all our emergency vehicles, if the fire department had an issue, they would make a comment. They came back with, they have no comments on this. So I can understand the emergency vehicle concern, but it was addressed with our fire We're really only looking at Lot One here. I know there was concern that if he decides not to build, Lot One has a house on it.
Yes.
Currently.
Yes.
Right, so if he decides not to build, he still has a house on Lot One, on the 16,000 square foot lot.
Correct.
So that's really not in our concern, and we're doing some housekeeping. I know we just added a couple, a little under 2,000 square feet. I appreciate coming in front of us for the change. Realistically, you could build it anyways because both lots are buildable. The Lot Two, where a lot of the questions is, could be two lots. It's...
55.
Yeah, it's, you know, we're, we can't really chime in on that. That's, you know, 55,000 square feet. That's nothing in front of us on that. It's the 16,000, and to tell you the truth, if you wanted to move it to the other side of the driveway and grant an easement to Lot Two, you probably wouldn't have to come in front of us at all, so I don't see us holding up for a little over, a little under 2,000 now, this development. I get living next to some construction zone stinks. Unfortunately, that's not something we can stop either, so I have no problem... So, I have no problems with this. I think we're asking for, you know, to do the right thing, to minor ask. Did you want to add something?
Yeah, so I, I actually just measured this distance.
Okay.
I know that it's 18 feet.
Okay.
So, we know that it's 18 feet times the length of this line, and that math comes out to 1,320 square feet. So, if we add the 13, 20.
So, it's 26.
To the 16, 67. We can give you that number, so that would be the new lot area.
Yeah, so we're looking at like 2,600, roughly, I'm guessing. So, yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with this. I appreciate the applicant comment. I can empathize with the neighbor's concerns, but there's really nothing we could do to stop this from happening, because there's ways that they can make that easily 20,000 square foot lot, and it wouldn't be in front of us anyway, so. I have nothing else.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Hovey.
So, that total lot area would now be 17,387 square feet.
Okay. All right. The chair recognizes Mr. Prokop. Mr. Prokop, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think most of my queries were addressed specifically with the stormwater, because that was something that the engineers were concerned about. I also appreciate, Mr. Hammond, that you met with the stormwater team twice, and I would like to see their comments, updated comments since you met with them.
So, we responded back to the stormwater team, so we can, we'll provide those, that correspondence to DPD, and that would also be incorporated into the planning board proceedings.
Oh, brilliant. Yeah, as, as member Hovey said, I don't think there was much we can do, and especially when it comes to noise mitigation, working on the weekends, I think that's more of a city thing, traffic. But, I mean, it looks like a beautiful plan. I've driven around several times, so I could understand the impact, you know, especially during construction. Construction is, is very difficult to deal with when you see mounds of dirt, and it hasn't been done. But within our purview, we're looking at lot one, and I think that the adjustments you made on the square footage makes it a lot easier, you know, for us to power it. I don't have any further questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Prokop. Chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think this is all allowable by right, and I'll be voting in favor.
Okay. Thank, thank you. All right. Oh, I allow a lot of my time for Councilman Landry wants to say a few words. Go ahead, Counselor. Good evening, sir.
Thank you, Chairman Peck. Distinguished members of the board, good evening. Corey Belangia, 200 Rogers Street. So, yeah, the, myself and my constituents, mainly the Director Butters, met at the Riley School early in the month on a very, very informative informational session as to the project, and, you know, as you can see, this project's been ongoing. I mean, we have no doubt Mr. McSorley's going to do a first-class job, you know, in the end, but, you know, there has been a considerable amount of disturbance in the meantime with the poolhouse and the patio, if you will. So, we would ask, what we'd like to do is ask for just a three-minute break, and with the, with my constituents, perhaps we could ask the board to support a few conditions to the project that will help perhaps minimize the impact on the project, and that's what we'd like to ask from the board, just take a few minutes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. If there's no objections from my colleagues, all right, seeing, and we're going to have a brief, short recess, and we'll resume in about three, four, five minutes. All right.
Well, the next one, the continuance, want to just move on to the next one, too?
That's a good idea.
Yeah, Peter, can we just do the next one while they're, you know, we're in recess, or, because that's going to be a continuance anyways, right?
Yeah, I think that's all.
All right, so we'll table this one, and then we'll just go on to the next one, and we'll come back to this one. All right, so the next agenda on the item is ZBA-2025-13. The petition is a special permit. The applicant is New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, property located at Riteaway adjacent to 11 Crowley Street. The petition, the loser of appeals will hold a public hearing until interested persons relative to an application by New Singular Wireless PCS LLC to install a replacement wireless small cell facility at an existing utility pole in the public Riteaway adjacent to 11 Crowley Street. The subject area is located in traditional two-family TTF zoning, just to require special permit approval from the loser of appeals per section 76 of the zoning ordinance and any lift card and load ordinance. We did get communication that they're seeking continuance. Is anyone here from, from New Singular Wireless PCS LLC?
Anybody answering? I'm just checking.
Oh, yeah, good, good evening. Is there anything you want to say about this continuance or this project?
Just quickly, Mr. Chair, I did, we did, we did not get the signage posted on the utility pole in time for the public hearing, so we requested a continuance through Peter's office, and hopefully we can get scheduled for, I believe, the 12th. Is that the next meeting?
April 28th is the next one. I don't, but I don't know if there's any room on the agenda. Just give me one minute, sir, let me just confirm with people here. Mr. Trump, is there any opening on the next agenda?
Yes.
All right. So, we can continue this to the next available hearing, which is April 28th. Are you amenable to that, sir?
If you give me one second, just let me check the calendar here. Yes, the 28th is fine with us, thank you.
Okay. All right. All right, so, we're continuing to matter to April 28th. Mr. McCarthy, can I have a motion, please, to continue the matter?
Through, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA-2025-13 for a special permit at 11 Crowley Street, or at the Riteaway adjacent to 11 Crowley Street to be continued to April 28th, 2025.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy to continue the matter. Second by the vice chairman. Can I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve.
Vice Chairman Callahan.
Approve continuance to April 28th, 2025.
Member McCarthy.
Approve continuance to April 28th, 2025.
Member Brier. Member Prokop.
Approve continuance to April 28th, 2025.
Member Hovey.
Approve.
All right, the matter's been continued. We'll see you April 28th, sir.
Thank you all, I appreciate it very much.
All right, have a good night.
You, too.
Thank you. All right. If folks are ready, we'll, we'll continue on with the petition for, okay, for Clark Road. We'll give people a few minutes to, to discuss.
Do you have any additional comments? Because we ended with you, and you didn't speak about the project. I don't know if you had any questions or comments before we.
Um, thank you for that, Counselor. I think some of the comments I had were a lot similar to my colleagues. I do think that I hear the concerns of the neighbors, and, you know, I know it's, it is a burden in terms of, you know, like, construction and noise and, you know, the, you know, if, if this gets approved tonight, you know, the outcome and how long it will take for inception to completion, you know, six months out, three months out, you know, a year out. Those are some of my concerns, I, you know, but I, I'm hoping that it seems like everyone's really like willing to kind of work together, try to find a middle ground here, because in the end, I think a lot of us have similar goals, just to be good neighbors and good patrons. Those are some of my concerns. Yeah.
Okay.
Is, is there anything you wanted to add, Counselor?
No, we did meet, and we did go to a meeting prior to coming in here to discuss with the neighbors certain things and address some of their concerns, which is what Corey's going to talk about. There were certain things that we did all agree to at the meeting, and I think that's what he wants to discuss now.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Councilman Landry.
So, we did speak with my constituents and the petitioner. So, we did ask for a timeline. It's the projects, it's, I mean, my, as I stated earlier, there's been a considerable amount of work done to this level, and, but they cannot, they, apparently, they're just seeking permits for tonight, and it's, I'm told it's going to be a couple, handful of years or so, possibly, before they do build the project. I know it's still good, so, that would be the message to my constituents, to Butters. It seems like this, you know, once the poolhouse is complete and the patio is going to be a reprieve, if you will, before the actual home is built, the second home in the rear. So, that's kind of good for my, my constituents, that there will be a little break in the action, if you will. So, we would ask that you would support some conditions here tonight, to put, set in stone for when it does go in front of the planning board, at least it'll be in place for consideration. And one would be that the petitioner work with DPD to establish a landscaping plan and incorporate my, the Butters, if, if that's not too much to ask as well. The Director Butters on either side for privacy issues, trees and whatnot. There was no, again, the landscaping plan's new to all, to all of us tonight. We know it's going to be superb, I'm sure it's going to look great, but my, like I said, I just would like a little input there, if they could. The fire department is already, that's already built in, right? They've already responded, so that won't be necessary. You know, construction of the new house, we would ask that no weekends construction take place, as, you know, the Butters like the usage of their property as well. So, no construction going on when the home is built. Some, any kind of dust remediation, you know, stone cutting or anything, they would ask as they, one has a pool to one side, and they keep the windows open in, you know, nice weather, and they would ask that dust remediation plan be in there as well. And lastly, stormwater runoff, work with the city engineer to establish a stormwater runoff plan, which they showed concerns here tonight, and we appreciate that. We want as much purview as we could to absorb all the stormwater. I mean, there's a lot of land here, as we know, we're talking over 50,000 square feet, but we want, you know, as much of that rain, stormwater absorbed as humanly possible. And, good? And so, that's what we would ask, the conditions that we would ask the board to support tonight, and to set in stone for the, for the planning board to consider. Great, be greatly appreciated. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor. All right, Counselor Flood, I just wanted to ask, so those are about, it sounds like five conditions, if I'm not mistaken. What are your thoughts with, with the conditions that we just talked about tonight?
So, when we met with them, we did discuss certain conditions that we would be okay working with the neighbors on. So, building during the week, we're only allowed, he's only allowed to build under a building permit Monday through Friday. We're fine with that. That's, that's the, Dave Fuller told us that's the only time you can do construction. Doing landscaping and outside work during the weekend is fine per the building commissioner. So, it's, it's constructing the house Monday through Friday, which we're allowed to do, but not on the weekend per a building permit. So, that's under the guise of the commissioner. Fire access, this plan has been submitted to the fire department. They've already signed off on it. They had no issues. Dust mitigation, we did agree that my client would try to mitigate the amount of dust by, I think it's water, they use hoses to try to mitigate the dust. He's fine with that. That's not an issue. And I don't know, what were the other things? The drainage, the drainage will all be addressed through the city with the stormwater with, it's Gordon, Gordon Bergeron, with the stormwater management team. They have already reviewed the plan. They have already made comments. We have already revised the plan based on their comments. We discussed with the neighbor, Mark Braw, before we came in here, if he has an engineer that wants to reach out to the city or to Matt to discuss any drainage issues he thinks would surface, then we're happy to answer them. But our work at this site is going to be in compliance with the City of Lowell rules, ordinance, stormwater team, everything is going to have oversight by the city.
Okay.
We're willing to work with the neighbors and be neighborly, but all of these things are things that the city is already over, looking over. They're already critiquing, we're already working with them. So, I'm not sure how they would be a condition on a variance.
Well, Mr. McCarthy, did you have a comment, sir?
If I could, through, Mr. Chairman, stormwater is mandated by the state to not provide any runoff at all. Is that correct, civil engineer, Matt Hammer? No runoff can go beyond the.
That's correct. You cannot impact an abutting property with runoff.
That's state mandate.
That's correct.
Right. So, we already are doing that, Counselor, per the state mandate, that no property in the city is allowed to influence other properties with stormwater runoff. So, I think that's already, as the Counselor mentioned. The one that you didn't mention, though, is the petition, the applicant to work with DPD and to incorporate the concerns from a landscape standpoint of the Director Butters.
Oh, we're absolutely willing to work. I mean, we have to work with the city pertaining to the landscape plan anyway.
So, we could have that, we could have that, we could certainly have that one, right?
Yes, we have no problem with that, and I guess what I need to know, though, is my correspondence regarding the landscape plan is I will be working with the city to approve a landscape plan and then reaching out to Mr. Belangia to inform the neighbors as to what the city is looking for within that plan, correct?
I don't think we can make a condition that they have to work with the neighbors. I think we're stepping way over our purview on that. There's no way we can say that the petitioner has to work with the city and the Butters.
You might never get a consensus.
I think we're stepping over what we can do. There are ordinances as far as construction time. I don't think we can just, you know, force a petitioner to work with the neighbors. I mean, we'd like it, we would like them to meet. It seems like they're already meeting, they're already having these conversations. We just can't say, hey, your project can't go on if you don't get approval through your, through the Butters. I think we're going way off of our, our job here.
Thank you, Ms. Hovey. Did you have a comment, Mr. McCarthy?
And I would just add that you have another shot at this with the planning board, and if you want to have conditions and bring it up with them, you can try there, too, but I, I agree that we're here for a variance for lot one, and concerns of how the lot two gets developed is, lot two meets zoning. So, putting conditions on lot two, I don't see where that kind of relates here, but I would say we should have a condition that we provide a revised site plan to show lot one as 17,400 square feet, plus or minus.
Yes, we will.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Ms. Callahan, do you have a comment?
Mr. Chairman, I mean, I know from the comments from DPD that they made several suggestions or recommendations for conditions. Some of it seems to accumulate, accompany whatever is being asked here, so the applicant
whatever is being asked here. So the applicant, one of them, the applicant should record an easement granting to future owners, propose Lot 1 access to the driveway parking area. I mean, that's, that's a no-brainer, obviously, right?
Yes.
Yep.
As soon as, as soon as we need to, that will be, we will do an easement.
Yep.
Gain access.
Applicant shall comply with all engineering department comments, and the comments engineering made. A lot of them go to...
Drainage.
Drainage. And how, no, the contractors needing to apply for all city permits, following all rules...
Correct.
...as far as construction and all that is concerned. Proposal is subject to approval from the city stormwater team. So that's...
We are working with them.
Which you're working with.
Yes.
Applicant shall submit a site plan, reducing the number, amount of impervious surface, but...
Which we've done.
Which we've done. And I would probably add on to that note to extend the lot line as well.
Lot line, yes.
So that would be, applicant shall replace a portion of the impervious service, already discussed. And then applicant shall provide detailed landscaping plan. Again, you're working with DPD.
Correct.
For the landscaping plan. And I would agree with Member Havi that that's gonna be done by the city. Feel free to share it with the neighbors, obviously. Good neighbor, good fences make good neighbors. So it's like, you, you are free to do so, no, at, at your own. But I would agree with Member Havi that we can't condition that on, you know, approval by the city, but sharing it with the neighbors. Because if the neighbors have objections, then we're...
What are we gonna do?
We're, 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 we're in a, we're in a battle here. So, but if you were, I mean, if your client is in approval of that, I mean, those conditions, those recommended conditions from, I think that kind of covers a majority of what Counselor Belanger was just mentioning, as far as the concerns of the neighbors. So that's just, that's just, that's just my comments, so, thanks.
Yeah, I think, I think that makes sense. So we'll just, we'll run down the conditions that we talked about. Yeah, yeah, good. And Mr. McCarthy's gonna just go over the conditions?
Let me just state the 10 conditions listed as the conditions from the Department of Planning and Development. The applicant shall record an easement as proposal Lot 1. The applicant shall comply with the all engineering comments. The applicant, the proposal is subject to approval from the city stormwater team, considering utilizing green stormwater infrastructure where appropriate. Fourth is the applicant shall submit a site plan, reducing the amount of impervious surface. Five, the applicant shall replace a portion of impervious surface with pervious paving material. Six, the applicant shall provide a detailed landscape plan, including plant species quantities, location, subject to DPD approval. The applicant shall seek to install a diverse range of native species, which will require a few resources to maintain. Seven, applicant shall revise the site plan to reduce the amount of impervious surface. And if I could add, correct the Lot 1 square footage to reflect 17,400 square feet plus or minus. Eight, the applicant shall provide a detailed landscape plan, including...
You're repeating them.
I am repeating.
Yeah. So, so go back.
I am repeating.
You did one through six, okay? So four and five have already been done. Those have already been done and already been submitted. And then you went on to the next section, and you repeated one and two and three. They're all the same from the previous. So...
The only other one added is...
A to F are the same as one to four. And the conditions for four and five have already been complied with, so I don't think we need them. So I think we have four conditions, being the easement, complying with engineering department comments, which we're working with, proposal of the stormwater team, and provide the, the detailed landscaping plan, which is F on that list. And revise the plan to reflect the lot area. So we have...
Five.
Five.
You are correct. Thank you for clarifying that.
Not a problem.
One of the situations that we get into when the plans get revised before or after the comments are generated. Okay. Thank you.
I like them to be done before I come.
Okay.
All right. Any other, was it a motion? Or a motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by...
I don't think he made a motion.
Oh, there wasn't a motion on the conditions? Okay.
Yeah.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2025/12 for 133 Clark Road for variance with the previously mentioned five conditions.
All right. Motion by Mr. McCarthy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Prokop. Can I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve the conditions.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve the conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the conditions.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Prokop.
Approve the conditions.
And Member Havi.
Approve.
All right. You've been approved. Wish you best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night, folks.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Moving on to the next item on the agenda. We have other business. We have minutes for approval for March 24th, 2025. Any comments, edits, additions to the minutes from March 24th for my colleagues? All right, seeing none, can I have a motion to approve the minutes, please?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of March 24th, 2025.
All right. Motion by Mr. McCarthy to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second by the vice chairman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes are unanimous. Any other comments for my colleagues here before we adjourn? All right, seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All right. Motion by Mr. McCarthy to adjourn.
Second.
Second by the vice chairman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes are unanimous. We are adjourned. Thank you. Have a good night, folks.